Good morning, everyone. The July 8th, 2020 meeting of the City Council is called to order. The meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV, Cable Channel 2, and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. Please note customers of CenturyLink and Cox Communication may view this program in high definition on Channel 1002 and in standard definition on Channel 2. You may also watch this meeting live on Apple TV, Roku, Amazing Fire TV, and On-the-Go Vegas app. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcast, KCLV Channel 2 and the web, the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., also on Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 5:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler systems, and if alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exit at the back of the chambers going out to the mezzanine. Proceed out the double doors to the terrace and go down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or one of our fire officials for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Streets. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment-related items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available in the clerk's office or at the rear of these chambers, but if you don't submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone is present today who has need for hearing impaired equipment, please see our city clerk staff up front. And please note, if you parked in the parking garage across the street, a self-validation machine is located in the foyer between the council chambers and the security desk you walk through to enter these chambers. You must have your ticket with you to use the machine, and if you do not have your ticket, see security personnel when exiting for a validation coupon. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Chaplain Victoria Camp, Messages of Faith Ministry, and remain standing for the pledge, and thank you for joining us.
For those who wish to bow their head and join in prayer, I pray, Almighty God, I come before you this day and ask for the blessings upon the Las Vegas City Council and the office of the mayor, for the citizens of this great city and state, and for all those here today. I pray for wisdom and humbled hearts for those in the city and community leadership, for thoughts of others, and a betterment for all those whom they serve. Amen.
(Clerk) Goodbye, United States of America, and the good republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, in the justicethere. Morning, everyone. I want you to know that we are maintaining social distance requirements as well as the required masks, and we are six feet apart up here on the dais, so the mask requirement is a matter of choice only, and I prefer to be able to breathe clearly, and so you can hear me, but my mask is right here should there be anybody that needs to come up to have a conversation. And I look out and I see we have our staff, who I don't recognize because I have no idea who you are. There could be some real phony people in here, but I do recognize our city manager, Jorge, and Mr. Dorcat, and the flowers. So we will proceed. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific agenda items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, spell it if it's unusual so our city clerk can make it clear. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. We will set the time at one minute, and I would ask our city clerk to explain how our ecomments work and read any public comments for this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Viewers can follow along with the meeting by watching our livestream on KCLV Channel 2 and on YouTube, or by accessing our Meetings and Agendas page on the city's website at lasvegas.gov.com forward slash portal forward slash search. Any and all persons are encouraged to send comments and written objections electronically prior to the meeting via email to citycouncillive@lasveganesevada.gov. Emails received up to an hour before the meeting will be considered public record, read during the item, and included in the backup. Comments can also be submitted via the city's website during the meeting at www.lasveganesevada.gov/councilcomment. All comments received during the meeting will be considered public record, read during the item, and included in the backup. Late emails and comments received on an item after each action has been taken will not be read, but will be included in the backup. A time limit may be imposed on the comments read for the record, as is standard practice when comments are made in person. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I am opening up this public comment during this portion of the agenda. It will be, as I read, I believe I just read all this, but we, yes. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount and time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. Anyone who submitted a speaker card or wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. This is, again, your opportunity to address our council, but the council will not be responding or engage in dialogue. We will set the time at one minute, and, good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jeffrey Long, J-E-F-F-E-R-Y-L-O-N-G. If you look me up on Facebook, I have a Malcolm X picture, just in case you're wondering. The reason why I'm here today is because it seems like you guys have gone back to business as usual. We have matters regarding rezoning.
Excuse me? I'm sorry, sir. What item are you speaking to?
All of them.
No, no, this is, it has to be specific to an item.
Okay.
We welcome you to come back at the end of the meeting.
We'll start with AR 24,044.
We don't have that.
Item four.
No, we had the Pledge of Allegiance. So you're welcome to stay through the council meeting or return at the end, and then you can speak to any issue you wish, but this is item-specific to the agenda.
Can I show somebody what I'm looking at so you can tell me if I'm not seeing it correctly?
Okay.
Is this not the item? Sorry, let me put my mask on for you.
No. What side are you on? That's the Court Commission Meeting Agenda. This is the City of Las Vegas Council meeting.
Okay, well, thank you for clarifying. All right, okay. All right, so my mishap.
Thank you. And you can come back at the end to speak to any item you wish.
And what time do you think that would be?
Wow. You might, this is public TV, so if you get a hold of Channel 2 or KCLV, just keep an eye on it.
Yes, ma'am. I'll just sit and go on.
Certainly not before 10:30 or 11:00. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment, please come forward and state your name for the record, and then the item to which you will be speaking. While we're waiting, do you have anything that has come in online? Please, Madam Clerk.
No, ma'am, we don't.
And yes, hi, sir. Good morning. Your name, please. Is the mic on there, please?
William LeVarz.
Good morning. And your name again, sir?
Bill LeVarz.
Okay, thank you.
I'm back.
Well, good health to you, and tell us, what item are you addressing, sir?
Years ago, I worked as council president at Robert Gordon.
But agenda, I mean, I need you to tell us what item on the agenda you're speaking to, or is it a general comment, in which case it would be at the end of the meeting?
No, I just, I just want to let you know, I love going to the council meetings.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. Be well. Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Dan Roll. I'm here, I believe it's item 33 about Stavros Anthony, before I begin. Or is it 32? Madam Fiori, it's good to see you back from your lunch break, quite possibly the longest lunch break in the history of City of Las Vegas.
Excuse me? No, 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 no. This is, I'm sorry, sir. You have to abide by the rules of the council.
32 or 33?
No, 32 is about commissions, and that is...
Those are city council members. 33 is about new appointments to the council as well.
Okay, that's the item I wish to speak on.
Okay, please.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Please stay on task then with that.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I am sure many people have addressed the importance of appointing a new mayor pro tem. You have some excellent candidates on your council, and I'm surprised, Madam Mayor, that you have not conducted a more robust survey of those candidates. But now, I think it's fair, to be honest, and to present all the reasons why Councilman Anthony should possibly be mayor pro tem. And so now, I'd like to read that list.
Thank you. Appreciate it, and...
I take the remainder of my time. I'll give you some time back. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next, please, your name, and if you wouldn't mind, just for the brief moment, take your mask down so we can see you. Thank you very much.
My name is Jamie Thomas, and I'm pretty well new here in this city, and since I've been here, I've been on the streets, off and on, for 20 years. And since I've been here, I've been going down to the shelter, trying to get help with the mission.
Excuse me? What item are you addressing?
Salvation Army and everything. They all told me I'm not allowed in there.
Okay, but what item are you addressing?
I can't read it right.
Okay, let me see if I can have someone help you. From Ms. Thomas Gibson will be right here, and if you'll just wait till she comes down, she is in charge of our courtyard.
When I go to the...
Right here, she is right here.
...the places that like businesses, and I have to use the bathroom, and I can't go in the bathroom, I have to do it outside.
Here's Ms. Thomas Gibson. She will help you. Right there?
Come tell me.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming down. Anyone else on an item-specific agenda? Okay, we will move on now to Agenda 32, and I want to, before I make this comment, this is Boards and Commissions and Discussion for Possible Action on the Mayor Pro Tem. I want to first turn to former Mayor Pro Tem, Michelle Fiera, and thank you so very much for everything that you have done. I know you've done it loyally, with hard work, have been so reliable for us, and I appreciate that because of all the issues with which we're dealing around our state, that you, I know you have tons on your plate and beyond this city, and so thank you. And at this point, and I think we all do that, I want to put forward, it's a discussion for possible action to elect Councilman Stavros Anthony to serve as mayor pro tem, and it is my motion to ask him, which he has accepted his willingness to do, to validate that motion, please. So please vote and please post. Mine won't work, unfortunately. I see I'm the last one. Oral yes, please, and please post. Thank you very much. The motion carries, and thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate your effort here. We'll move on to Agenda Item 6, Business Item for Possible Action. Any items from the 9:00 a.m. session that the council staff and/or applicant wish should be stricken, table withdrawn, held in advance to a future meeting may be brought forward enacted upon at this time. Mayor Pro Tem Anthony, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item, Item Number 40, SDR 78245, applicant, Moe Construction Owner, CVV, .43 acres at 3801 West Charleston. The applicant has asked us to be obeyed until July 22, 2020, and that's my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. Oh, it did work. Thank you. That motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item 7, and that is for possible action to approve the final minutes by reference to the June 3, 2020 regular City Council meeting. Mayor Pro Tem may have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move to approve the June 3, 2020 minutes.
Thank you very much. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item 8. Items 8 through 30 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, recommended for approval by the departments, and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items council wishes to bring forward? Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem may have a motion on the...
I move to approve the consent agenda items 8 through 30.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item 31, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Authorization to Purchase and/or Condemn the Property Located at 513 South Main for the Downtown Central Plaza Project, $2,105,751, City Parkway 5. This is in Ward 3, Councilwoman Diaz. Wow. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman, members of City Council, Bill Lawrence, Director, Economic and Urban Development. This item before you is part of our downtown redevelopment program, where we try to acquire property from willing sellers, and then we would be the willing buyer, and that's the case in this instance. We did write up the agenda item to allow authorization to purchase or condemn the property 513 South Main Street, commonly known as Goodfellas Bail Bonds. I am happy to report, through a lot of hard work from our team, particularly Tara Anderson, we have reached agreement with the property owner to purchase the property. The purchase price is in your backup. It's a not-to-exceed amount. The purchase price excluding some of the relocation costs that we would be paying the property owner is approximately $2 million. There's an additional $85,000 in relocation costs to assist the business. The reason, one of the reasons the price is the way it is, is we're buying the property and the business, and the business may not be able to find a new location. This will allow us to acquire all of the block across the street from City Hall and support new public-private partnership development. And as you know, part of the original design of putting City Hall at this location was to support a new downtown office campus, to bring in new Class A office buildings into downtown. So that's really the reason that we're doing this. It is to support this new project, the Downtown Central Plaza Project, and if you do approve today, we will be coming back to you on the following council agenda with a purchase-and-sale agreement with this property owner. Staff recommends approval, and I'd be glad to answer any questions, you may have.
Any questions from council? When might we be coming to see the Downtown Central Plaza project plans?
So we are working on a request for proposal. We'd like to get that on the street in the next 60 to 90 days to solicit a private developer. We want to find the best partner, just like we did for the municipal court building, which is making great progress, as you can see across the street, as we redevelop and continue all the construction that's happening downtown. Once we find a partner, we think that construction could start within a 12-month period after that. So we're looking at, within the next 12 to 15 months, we'd like to be out there starting construction. We will, in the interim, look to use some of that land for surface parking, because parking is coming back, and there is a demand for parking to support both City Hall as well as visitors to downtown.
Thank you. Councilwoman, please, yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I also want Mr. Lawrence, for you to clarify for the viewers and the public. I know, right now, these are difficult times, and they're probably saying, wow, we're expending $2 million on this acquisition. Could you speak to the monies that are going to pay for this transaction and this acquisition? I don't want folks to think that we're taking away from much-needed programs in our community, but it's actually coming from a very specific account. That is not the general fund.
Thank you, Councilwoman Diaz. You're correct. I should have mentioned that in my comments. We are using funds from City Parkway 5, Inc. That is a holding company that was formed by the city to develop downtown real estate, including Sepulte Park. We do have funds on hand, and that money is specifically appropriated for land development and land acquisition in the downtown area. This is not impacting the city's general fund, and it doesn't affect our operations for our city services or any other funds for any programs for folks that are out there in the community to help. So it's specifically set aside for that purpose, and it doesn't have any impact on the general fund.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I'm excited about us completing the area here across from City Hall. I think it'll definitely bring an area that hopefully our community can enjoy down the road. So with that, I move to approve Agenda Item 31.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. Wonderful. Look forward to you coming back and letting us see what the plans might be.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll move on to Agenda Item 33, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding New Appointments of Mayor Goodman, Caroline Goodman, and council members. Brian Knutson, Olivia Diaz is representative of the following boards, Las Vegas Springs Preserve, Board of Trustees, Councilman Knutson, Las Vegas Global Economic Alliance, Mayor Goodman, and the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition, Councilwoman Diaz. May I have a motion to approve these appointments? Please, Mayor Pro Tem.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve. Please vote and please post. Thank you. The motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item 34, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of nominee Valerie Brown to the Civil Service Board of Trustees. Mr. Rodney Jordan was originally appointed in 2012. His term expired in March of 2020, and since he is termed out and can no longer serve, a replacement must be named. Ms. Valerie Brown is eligible and wishes to be appointed. Councilman Anthony, I understand you're prepared to make a motion on this item.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve Valerie Brown to the Civil Service Board of Trustees.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote on the appointment, and please post. Motion carries. We'll move on to Agenda Item 35, Recommending Committee Bills Eligible for Adoption at This Meeting, Bill Number 202018. City Attorney, would you please read the bill?
Yes, ma'am. Bill Number 2020-18, An Ordinance to Amend LVMC Section 6.82.60 pertaining to smoking lounges to update an age limitation to be more consistent with federal law regarding tobacco sales and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion on Bill, Agenda Item 35. Please vote, please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 36, New Bills. Items Number 36 and 37, Bills Number 2020-20 and 2020-21 will be heard at the Recommending Committee on Monday, July 20, 2020. City Attorney, please read the new bills.
Bill Number 2020-20, An Ordinance to Authorize on a Temporary Basis a Partial Waiver of the Origination Charge for New Restaurant Service Bar Licenses and to Provide For Other Related Matters. Bill Number 2020-21, An Ordinance to amend Various Provisions of the Unified Development Code to Establish the Circumstances Under Which On-Premise Signs with Off-Premise Messaging are permitted in Connection with Certain Non-Restrictive Gaming Establishments, Commercial Recreation, Amusement Establishments, Indoor or Outdoor, and Convention Facilities, and to Provide For Other Related Matters.
Thank you very much. These new bills, 2020-20 and 2020-21, are assigned to the July 20, 2020 Recommending Committee. Councilwoman Fiori, are you able to attend? Are you able to attend, Mayor Pro Tem? Councilman Knutson, I'd like you back on this committee if you're able to attend.
Mayor, I would love to attend, but I had scheduled a vacation. I did let the clerks know. It is the only meeting I should miss the next year. My apologies.
Okay, so the next time. So what we'll do here, I will, let's leave it as is with the two council persons, and if either one of them are unable to attend, please let me know, and I will make sure that we find a replacement, or I will go. Thank you very much. And that will be heard here in council chambers, and again, it's on July 20. Thank you. Have a good vacation. Hope it's someplace fun that's open.
It'll be, it'll be closed down with children, but a different house, so that's, that'll be fine. That's all we need.
That's always a treat. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 38. Items 38 and 39 are on the consent agenda, considered to be routine, recommended for approval by the Department of Planning. Mayor Pro Tem may have a motion to approve consent agendas 38 and 39.
Move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion on Agenda Items 38, 39. Please vote and please post. Motion's carry. Thank you. Agenda Item 40, withheld in advance to July 22. Move on to 41, RQR 78424, Public Hearing, Applicant Plaza Hotel and Casino. Owner, T-UPR2 LLC, for possible action, required review of an approved special use permit. SUP 76219 for horse corral or stable commercial use at 222310324 and 432 South Main. CM Commercial, Industrial, and M Industrial Zones. These are in Ward 5 with Councilman Creer. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open, and is the applicant or representative present?
Good morning. Laura Dreya, 520 South 4th Street. I'm here on behalf of both Plaza Hotel and the Core Arena. We'd like to thank staff, who in their report acknowledged that Core has been conducting their outdoor events in a manner that's harmonious and compatible with adjacent uses. However, after speaking with Councilman Creer, we recognize that nearby properties are being developed as residential, and the character of the area could change rapidly. Therefore, we agree to strike Condition 3, which states no further reviews are required, and instead, we agree to replace that condition with one that reads, quote, "Required review is public hearing one year from the date of approval," unquote.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone from the public wishes to be heard on Agenda Item 41, please come forward. Anyone online, or?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to close public hearing and turn this over to Mr. Lowenstein. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor. Peter Lowenstein, Deputy Plating Director, for the record. As indicated, the use can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with the surrounding area. There have been no violations of license requirements or zoning standards recorded since the approval of the special use permit, and staff is recommending approval. With that, I don't have the conditions up, but the striking of the condition that states that no further required reviews are necessary would be deleted, and a new condition would be placed as a required review at a public hearing before the city council shall be conducted in one year from the date of final approval.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments you wanted to make beyond what you've read?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions come in from the city council? Okay, you lucky man.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that, you know, the Plaza has been a good partner for the city and for downtown, and I know they have aspirations to do good things there. With the pandemic that has happened, it's set some plans back, and I just, the whole premise of that facility was a temporary facility and not a permanent facility, but I think that with the review, you come back, and when you're ready to make a permanent facility, then come and present that to the council, and we will take it from there. So I'm going to make a motion for approval with the revised condition.
Thank you very much. There's a motion on Agenda Item 41. Please vote and please post. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck. We look forward to seeing you. Agenda Item 42, EOT 78762, Public Hearing, Non-Conforming. Applicant Owner 8T8 Holdings LLC for Possible Action or Request for Fourth Extension of Time for Non-Conforming Liquor Establishment Tavern, 808 West Lake Mead Boulevard, C1 Limited Commercial, Zone Ward 5, with Councilman Krier. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present? Okay, let's turn this over to planning, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Staff finds that the applicant has demonstrated the request for an extension due to economic hardship. The health, safety, and welfare of the public would not be jeopardized by the continuation of the liquor establishment taverns at this location. Staff is therefore recommending approval of the one-year time limit in accordance with Title 19. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, were there any comments online?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I will close the public hearing and turn this over unless there are any questions comment from council, please.
Can I ask you?
Yes. And again, if you wouldn't mind repeating your name.
Yeah, no problem. It's Jeffrey Long, L-O-N-G, his last name. It seems that the tavern wants to be on West Lake Mead, and since the applicant isn't even here, I don't think we should do that, simply because there's enough alcohol, taverns, food and liquor, whatever you want to call it, on Lake Mead. So I am against it, and I ask that you be against it as well. I understand it's hard times for that family, but if they are approved this and they get to open up this tavern, there's going to be a lot more families that are ruined because of this alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Krier?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have been in constant contact with the applicant over the course of a couple of years, actually, and they are very good people and have great intentions of turning this into a facility that we're all going to be proud of. And this is not new for a tavern. It's going to revitalize. It was a tavern prior, and it'll continue to be a tavern. And they were here. They were coming in time from Hawaii. I'm not sure where they are. Maybe they just thought we were going to get to this later. But with all that said, I'm going to make a recommendation for approval and look forward to working with them to build this facility out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 42. Please vote. And please post. That motion carries. Agenda Item 43, Reports and Presentations. A report from City Manager Scotty Adams on emerging issues referencing all wards.
Madam Mayor, Scott Adams, City Manager. I just have a few brief items to update on. As you know, we are now subject to another directive from the state through the governor regarding masks, and I would report that our business licensing group has been responding to complaints about that issue. Our first line of approach to a business is to educate the business on what the requirements are for use of masks by employees and by customers. If a business has any question about compliance, they can call our 702-229-CARE number, and they'll be directed to business licensing for information on how they can comply. Likewise, if a citizen feels that a business is not in compliance, they can call that same number and ask that licensing look into the matter. We are, as we've briefed on previously, we're going to be augmenting our business assistance program by another $2 million. We are working through what that final grant process looks like. As you know, we're going to be expanding it to include a wider range of businesses, and we expect that that will be rolled out for an application process between July 15 and July 31. So again, if a business that didn't get in that first round of funding has interest in funding, they can again call 702-229-CARE. They'll be directed to the Economic and Urban Development Department where they can get information on how to apply. And then finally, I think it's been pretty broadly indicated that there is a special session that started today of the state legislature, and our team is monitoring that session as we speak. We do have our team up in Carson City, as well as we're monitoring it from here. It will be held in a very unusual manner. It's not going to be business as usual in the state legislature, so it means that we're going to have to exercise more diligence in tracking what happens at the legislative session. So with those items, that is the end of my report on emerging issues.
Could I ask you just briefly to comment on the businesses? What are some of the parameters of the businesses to be able to apply for those funds? I know we continue to get calls that DETER and so many parts of our government are not able to respond to funding unemployment. So we just, especially for our small businesses, what are those parameters?
Well, there's a lot of detail, so I would encourage a business to call that number, EUD, Economic and Urban Development, because we've added more detail in terms of a wider range of uses, types of businesses that can apply for the program. And I, off the top of my head, I don't have all those, but in that first round, there were certain businesses that, especially some of our privileged licenses, that could not apply, that now would be available to apply. And we've gone to a smaller range of employees. Previously, we weren't going below a certain amount, but we are now going to look at even home occupation businesses, because what we're finding is that they, even though they may run out of their home, they have employees that operate as subject to the state guidelines, and there's a cost associated with compliance. So we're, those are the two biggies, is we're opening a range of businesses that can apply, and then the number of employees that are in a business that could apply. So again, the number is 702-229-CARE, and they would be directed to Economic and Urban Development for how to apply for the program.
And these are for businesses. What if there's a sister business in the county or in another municipal county?
It would only be for their operation in the city of Las Vegas. And I would indicate, the source of funding for this is the money we did receive directly from the federal government through the CARES Act.
So it's very specific, and it must be expended by the 31st of December, is that not correct?
Well, we'll have a limited period of time for applications, because if you remember, we had made $4 million available the first round. There'll be another two on this round. So we're concerned that, again, the demand will greatly exceed the supply of money available, so we have a limited window that we'll make the program available under.
Thank you very much. I mean, to me, small businesses have been just really knocked aside, so this is wonderful that we're doing it. Any questions for the city manager, please? Nope, thank you. You've just done a remarkable job in a very, very difficult time. And this is a report only, so no motion. We'll move on to Agenda Item 44. Set a Date. Goodness gracious. Set the date in any appeals filed, required public hearings. I instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from city planning commission meetings in dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatements.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are moving into our second. Citizen Participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject has been on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time, any single speaker is allowed may be limited. It's your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? And do we have any ecomments to read, which we'll do after? You have none?
No, ma'am.
Coming in from ecomments? So, good morning, and how are you?
Good morning.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Daniel Braisted, resident of the city of Las Vegas, B-R-A-I-S-T-E-D. I'd like to compliment the Neapolis. They've, in their patio there, they had about four electrical junction boxes on the concrete that were uncovered and would get flooded every time when there was rain, and I've been attempting to get it, and somebody has finally capped them. I do ask that Neapolis be contacted to fix the side of the building on the south side. It's still damaged above the bus stop where people come to Las Vegas, still down the side of the south side. There's bricks and tiles missing, and I think there should be an ordinance that if I bring you a design for my building and you approve it, I commit to keep the outside of that building perfect. Now, because what happens on Fremont Street is, as people didn't pay to fix their signs, the whole point of Fremont Street died down. Do we only have a minute?
I did give, I didn't even suggest, but it should have been a minute. And what I'm going to ask is if you would go ahead and give your suggestions to Mr. Cervantes over here, because then he will contact the appropriate people and have that discussion to fix it.
Great. Okay, well, two months ago, a member of staff contacted me on, for some ideas that I had.
Right.
And I turned to them, and I said, I'd like to know if, in the job description, it includes reporting?
Okay.
Damage signs and waste.
Okay. Well, you've made that.
And I never heard back from her.
If you would just step to the side over here, right over outside that wall, and Mr. Cervantes will get your items. I know that our city manager had reached out as well. So thank you for coming down. I think those points are good.
Okay, I never heard back from Chief Phillips. I never heard from whether or not...
If you'll just tell Mr. Cervantes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that your package?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. We will set the time at one minute. My failure, so sorry.
Jeffrey Long, J-E-F-F-E-R-Y, L-O-N-G. I'll be brief, since I only have a minute. You took their land and then asked them to speak at the beginning of this meeting. You then take all of our money, but then don't put it back into our communities. You sit up there and you tell us that there's nothing you can do or you feel for us. Yet you're not out there walking with us, asking for us to be protected. You're not asking for justice. You're not asking for change. Even now, we're still worried about zones and districts and taverns, and it's ridiculous. Your city is dying. Your city is dying. Your city is dying. I mean, I don't know how much more I can, I could tell. What is it going to take? Is it going to take another school shooting for you guys to fucking get off here? Excuse my language. I apologize. I apologize. I'm just, I can't believe that it's happening like this. We're having meeting after meeting, and you guys are refusing to acknowledge the racial conflict in this city, in this country. What is it going to take?
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor. One minute's not enough time, so I created a website, fiorisaidwhat.com, where you can learn beyond a shadow of a doubt that Michelle Fiori, Ward 6, Councilwoman, is a racist, and she will be removed from the city council. I'm here to report to you, Madam Mayor, not about Michelle Fiori's abuse of city resources to defame questionable characters using your city's resources, but to assure you that the efforts to recall, Councilwoman Fiori, are moving ahead quickly, expeditiously, and efficiently. And I can assure you, Madam Mayor, and fellow members of the council, that Councilwoman Fiori will be removed from office, but I implore you to take action. You have in your power, the authority, to issue a non-binding resolution demanding she step down. This is absurd. You just had your citizens of your community come to this meeting weeks ago and tell you their feelings from their heart, and Councilwoman Fiori scattered like a cockroach in the light. It is embarrassing. It is disrespectful to this community, and I implore you, Councilwoman...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And if, just for a moment, you'd pull your mask down so we can see who you are, please. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Tashika Lawson. I was actually just trying to find out when the James Gary Park would be reopened. It is an actual park that has been closed for the last six years on the historic west side. It has actually been well-maintained. I would like to know when. I called into the city, and they said that they have no plans on reopening this park. We just came out of the COVID-19 pandemic lockdown. I know I took a lot of solace by visiting my local park, so for this ward to not be able to access an actual public resource is incredibly disheartening that we would be, they have been paying for a park that they can see but not enjoy.
Thank you. Your comments have been noted, and they are public comments. I can assure you, we are trying everything we can to have our parks open, but we have to abide by the emergency edicts of the governor and what they're doing, and the head of our parks and Ward 5 Councilman Krier, I'm sure can advise you as he finds out some more information specifically about that park, which I remember when it first opened. So it's all about safety, yes.
Thank you. Although we are not responding back to individuals, I'll speak in the back. Harry Williams is going to speak with you. And there are tremendous plans for the entire historic west side under what's called the Hundred Plan.
Thank you.
And so, a lot is happening. Thank you.
I did have one other comment that I'd like to ask. I don't know if I have a minute left.
Well, we did your minute, but very quickly.
I just wanted to ask, when do, I know that there are plans to demolish the Greater New Jerusalem Church that actually has been purchased by the city. I'd actually just like to know when that is, because I would like to have it registered as actual historic landmark as well.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for that comment. We will make note of that, and again, through Councilman Krier's office in Ward 5, follow up with that, please.
Okay.
Thank you. And if you'll give your phone number so we can get directly to you, to Mr. Radke or to Harry Williams back there in the corner. Thank you very much. Good morning.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Can we take off your mask for a moment, please?
Oops.
Because we can't hear you either.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. And your name, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the council, Lex Anderson, 3709 Water Hole Street. I'm the historian for our 25-year-old rural preservation neighborhood association. I only need a minute. Don't run away. I come bearing gifts. Can I get someone to help pass these out?
Okay. Well, don't use up your time. Use it to speak, and we'll do that after, please.
Thank you.
You want to credit him back his minute, please?
Okay. So you all have been receiving the PACER program for the last 40 weeks. In case you missed any of them, you've got a bound package of all of them now, so planning need ones also, so Peter's going to get one. I would ask you all to simply keep this on file for reference. The PACER program is the end result of five-year agenda scenario. It's been part of a 16-year-old land use saga that yet has to be resolved, and with a rewrite of Title 191820, there was a contingency written in 2018, so an ordinance changed, and a rewrite of that will be coming right shortly. So that's your copy. This is our copy. We have to keep documentation of everything. It's, it can't be subjective. It has to be objective with documentation. And also, and also during the PACER program, you referred to the ICD-10. This is what the ICD-10 looks like, and real. Okay, it's, Peter has a copy also.
Thank you.
And that's all I need.
Appreciate.
So thank you very much.
A lot of work, but thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. This is public comment time. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name for the record, and we'll give you one minute. Good morning. And if you could take your mask down briefly, thank you very much. Take your mask down briefly, just so we can see who you are, and then you can put it back up. Thank you. And you can pull that down closer to you? No, I meant the microphone, so you can speak into it. Thank you. Good morning.
So, a question, Your Honor. Stanley Washington, Las Vegas. This is Ruby Ducksworth. This is Alice Carr. They're going to sign the one... They're going to sign the one-minute over to me, so I'll have three.
Okay. You agree to give it to Mr. Washington, both of you?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. So, if you would, the three minutes, please.
So-
So, if you'll start him again, if, just one second, Mr. Washington, go. Okay. Thank you both for coming down and doing that.
I guess a question. Do we know when the public comment will go back to three minutes?
Hard to tell, but please don't waste your time with that.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to get data. See, the data driven.
Okay.
I'm not going to waste my time. I have a very specific up or down question. I put a proposal that's sitting on your desk for now, going out in a month now, maybe two weeks recognized, and it calls for five specific things. And I just wanted to know if those specific things are, are you in agreement with or not? You know, I've always been a fan of the city, regardless of what their past has been, and its past has always not been good, but I've always been, and I'll continue to do that. So, right now, I am organizing a birthday celebration centered around Pele, and I will be engaging with the mayors of around the world. And I would like to think the Las Vegas mayor would be the lead on this, but if not, then that's Las Vegas' prerogative, as it always is of these things. But the rest of the mayors of the world, we're going to engage around something of doing the right thing, and the proposal calls for that. So, I'm here to ask you now, have you now seen the proposal, or should I go ahead and go over the questions right now?
I have to tell you, my office staff, Reed sees everything and responds when they have it, so if you've not received word that the office has received it, we have not even yet received it.
Well, no, 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 no. Your staff will correct you on that. I have documentation from Stacia that she's received it two weeks ago. We're in now to, anything other than a yes today is a no today, which is fine. I'm just public record in terms of what's going on. So, as I go out to the world-
You may have come into the clerk's office.
And they ask me, is the city of Las Vegas with this? I say, no, they have not. No response. No problem. Everybody's there, in terms of what's going on. I just, I never want to put you out there, but you haven't taken, you have it.
Stacy is in the clerk's office, not in my office, so I have not received it, and my staff hasn't given it to me, so you're welcome to resubmit.
Well, Your Honor-
And I thank you, and I don't know if clerk has it.
Also, now, September, as you know, I've held four high-speed rail conferences, and the high-speed rail's coming back with money this time. Going to be holding a hot conference September, just like I have before. You know, I'm vested in this thing. I mean, I don't know about you guys, but I have about $150,000 in these things. And my job is to make sure my people are engaged in the front of the train, not the back of the train. You remember. You know, you got your BOMCO at that time. So, while I gave you an BOMCO at that particular time, this time, I'd like to go ahead and share with you a Black Dollars Matter t-shirt, because that's what the subject matter is basically all about. Really wasn't that concerned about what Michelle Fiori has to say, what any of you guys have to go ahead and say, because you're going to say that. But I am concerned about the lack of access to capital and the intentional systematic racism infrastructure to allow us to do that. So, I don't care what you call me, as long as you call me and go to the bank, that's my whole thing there. So, that's really where the accountability is. Even Michael Milken, who gave Mr. Win his money, says it's time to go ahead and cut the crap and get the capital to the black community. Now, whether you guys are listening or not, or want to do that or not, that basin remains to be saved.
Okay. Mr. Washington, your time's up, but I do want to let you know, my office has contacted me, and Stefania Roche has spoken with you extensively on many occasions. I have told them, we are not in a position, we don't plan the events, and has given you the name of who you speak to at the city, and that I would attend, she has said, if it works on the schedule. So, just to let you know, they did receive it. They have had conversations with you.
Well, I know they received-
Steph. Steph is her name.
I haven't received anything from her.
Okay. Well, just know, and we're very, very positive about making sure all of our communities, and very specifically our historic west side, that we do everything we can to create and infuse funding and power into the community.
Well, there's just five specific requests down there, and it's very straightforward. So, there's either a yes or a no, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I mean, that's, also, I mean, that's why-
And Steph, so call the office again, and she will review with you what you've gone over.
I'm going to work with them, but that's either a yes or a no. Either this office is supportive, or it's not. This office-
Of course we are.
There's a word in between.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council, please come forward, state your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Nicholas Vostigakis. Jorge Gomez was shot 19 times, and then the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department chose to address with a-
There it is. There it is.
Jorge Gomez was shot 19 times by Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. Rather than release the 12 video cameras surrounding the federal building or the name of the marshal who charged him down the steps and shot him with beanbag rounds before he was driven in the opposite direction and then shot 19 times by Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, they went on a smear campaign and chose to sully his name in the public square, okay? There's, this is an extrajudicial killing. We don't need our police officers running around like Judge Dredd in a comic book, playing judge, jury, and executioner. It's outrageous, and it's a dereliction of all of your duty to protect the safety of our citizens, to not address matters like this. Additionally, completely peaceful protesters are being jailed routinely at Black Lives Matter protests. I find it ironic that people can go up to the Capitol Building with AR-15s and run into the Capitol Building, and none of them get arrested, but completely peaceful protesters are thrown in the city jail with ridiculous conditions, absolutely disgusting, mold on the walls, non-functioning water for people to go in and drink.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council, please come forward, state your name?
Hello, everyone. Hope you guys are having a good morning. My name is Angie. So, I just want to-
Excuse me, Angie, your last name, please?
Thompson.
Thompson. Thank you.
Yes. So, I just, just my observation here, when people come up here and address these issues that are maybe more difficult to talk about, I feel like they're being just passed off, like, oh, okay, you vented for the day, so move right along, right? It's more so, I thought this was supposed to be a conversational piece, how do we get to the bottom of it? This is more so of, oh, okay, you feel like you want to matter, or you feel like you're being treated improperly, so just have a good day. I don't know. It's like, treat people with respect, treat them like their opinion matters, and actually make, take action against it, like, try to see things from their perspective. I don't feel like that respect is, is being given to some of these, these people who take time out of their day to come to these meetings and try to come and talk to you guys about that. I would actually like to invite you to, to talk about this on a public, more public platform, interview style, if there's something you'd be interested in, to see exactly, I know, Foray, I believe you had a meet and greet at a, at a park, right?
Thank you. Give a minute. Thank you. Appreciate it. But certainly, your council, where, wherever you reside, you have a council member, and you are, all of our phones are always open. The public comment that you're in right now is for no response from any of us, just you and others. Come down and make your statement. But all of our wards are open for anybody who wishes to call, make an appointment, if in fact there are issues with which we can help you. So, thank you for coming down, and we do care, and we do want to hear from you. So, please, wherever you do live, call your councilperson, and we will make sure that you have your opportunities. Thank you.
Care is an actual word.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment, please come down?
Hi, how are you?
And can we see your face, please, just for a moment?
Yes, absolutely. Hi.
Thank you. Hi. How are you?
Hi, my name is Tanisha Carmichael. I was here for the last City Hall meeting, or City Council meeting. I work for Power 88, the People's Station. I'm on the morning show there. I do believe conversations do need to be had. I'm up here to invite you specifically, as well as anybody else that would like to be on the show, because I think the community, we just want some answers, and we also want to know that there is concern. The best way to do that is through conversation. So, I just wanted to extend that invite. I will contact your people, because let me say this, at the end of the day, there's beauty in conversation. So, we can do the whole, oh, you know, well, we'll get to that. People feel like they need more answers. So, since you guys are up there, and money does go towards you guys being in those positions, we know that, we just want you to know that you have an invitation to have these conversations, because there's two sides to every story, but let's open up that floor. So, Power 88 is the People's Station. I extend that to you guys. Let's answer some questions.
Thank you.
Is that okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else, please come forward? Okay, I will close the public comment, and we will move on to item 46. Councilmember recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless the subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Let's go ahead, and we will start with today. We'll start with Councilwoman Seaman, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have some slides coming up, but we'd like to invite everyone, July 24, 2020, the public is invited to join the family of Alex Lawrence and I at the Kellogg's Air Sports Complex to unveil a plaque to commemorate his life at the new Summerlin Parkway pedestrian bridge. That will be July 24, and there'll be more information coming on my website and newsletter. We're gonna, we're still needing blood, so you can call the Red Cross or reach out to them. Blood donations are very important during this time, so if you go to redcrossblood.org and make an appointment, that would be very much appreciated, because we always have shortage, a shortage of blood. And then I want to get back to a few adoptions. We have Klaus ready for adoption. He was, he arrived there on July 1st, spade female, approximately 10 years of age. And then we have Sally, female spade, about 11 years of age. These animals really need homes. We have Tuck, who's a spade male. He's only three years old, approximately 73 pounds. And then we have Maximus. He's about five-year-old, gorgeous dog, 98 pounds. So, if you're interested in these or any other much-needed home for pets, please contact the adoption department at 702-955-5901, or you can email them at adoptions@animalfoundation.com. If you'd like to contact us regarding any issues, our main line is 702-229-2144, and we are at ward2@lasvegasnevada.gov. And for any other information or what we've talked about today, you can follow my social media. All three, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, are at Victoria D. Seaman. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I just want to say that, one, KCP is the People's Station. You know, I've been in this community for 51 years and been a part of KCP since the first day that I could possibly remember, and, you know, I personally, and I know that the mayor's gone on with me numerous times to talk about what's going on in the community, and I've been on every show all the time with the 702 wake-up crew. I haven't gone on with the new crew, and we do need to get out there and get on and let people know what's going on, but Patricia Cunningham, Lawrence Weekly, the breakdown on Fridays with Commissioner, excuse me, with Dave Washington and everybody. So, I do urge people to get out in our community and talk about their concerns. I think it's vitally important, and I'm always open to come out and talk to, because I get a lot of feedback as well, the good and the bad, you know? I think it's important. So, thank you all for, for what you're doing. You know, and we all have different means of getting things out. You know, before the pandemic, we had every third Thursday, we had our community conversations that we would bring out to, we've had everybody from people who were supporting us to people who are protesting us coming out for that, and I think that's very good. We do plan to have our annual October, every October for the past two years that I've been in office, our annual community forum, where we bring out all of our partners, including Metro, and talk about what's going on in the ward. We do plan on doing that, and it will be a virtual, and potentially have it here in the, in the chambers, and have some people come, but do it virtually. And I think that's important, and that's been very well-received. We need to get you guys updated, what's going on with the Hundred Plan also, and let you know what's happening. So, moving forward to that, the Discovery Children's Museum, we're very happy about this, the Discovery Children's Museum is now open, and they plan Fun-filled Family Day of Learning and Excitement. The museum has safety protocols in place to help ensure the safety of your family. Tickets can be purchased in advance. For more information, visit www.diskcoverykidslv.org. Our Bolden Lions Football Club is looking for soccer team players, and we said football, F-U-T-B-L, football. This program will assist players in maintaining academic success and future academic opportunities. For more information, contact Officer Vidal by email at L14802V, like Victor, at Las Vegas, excuse me, at LVMPD.com, or call 702-828-8234. I just want to thank all of our sponsors for Bolden Little League and for our football club. It's just great that we have so much community support, and we need to continue to support them. You can always check our newsletter, which comes out just about every week. What's it called? When in Ward 5, contact my office at 702-229-5443, or you can always send an email to tanya jackson, teachjackson@lasvegasnevada.gov. Always follow us on social media, and Twitter, Cedric Creer, Instagram, Councilman Creer, and Facebook, Councilman Cedric Creer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Fiori, let's go to you next, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, we have found one of our missing beautiful, you know, 17, I shouldn't say a child, but to me, she's still a child. We found Ayanna Hawkins, thank goodness, and now we are looking for Miranda, who is 16 years old. She's only 5'5", 90 pounds, brown eyes, black hair. She's Hispanic, and she was last seen around Charleston and Lamb. She was wearing a yellow shirt and black shorts, so please call Metro at 702-828-3111, or Nevada Childseekers at 702-458-7009. We are also missing Laudarius. He is 17. He is an African-American male, 5'9", 160 pounds. He was last seen in the area of Craig and Rango, wearing a dark shirt and dark blue shorts with the gray high-top shoes. So, please, again, call Metro at 702-828-3111, or Nevada Childseekers at 728-458-7009. Our Corridor of Hope, success story, I love these stories. We have Tommy Calardia. Tommy is an Alpine Apartment fire survivor. He shared details with his case manager at the courtyard about the difficult living conditions at the apartment complex. The day of the fire, Tommy was asleep and heard noises in the hallway. After opening his door, he discovered his hallway was full of smoke. He went back into his unit and called 911. He gave as many details as he was able to to the operator, but couldn't continue due to the severity of the fire and smoke. The client went to a nearby school with other residents for refuge and assistance. He stayed at a nearby hotel for a week. He later went to the Dula Community Center with other fire survivors for assistance. This is where he met the courtyard team. Case managers completed an intake assessment and housing assessment for Tommy. The city was able to temporarily house him at the Siegel Suites for three weeks. Because he was able to access temporary housing, Tommy could continue attending his medical appointments. After his stay with Siegel Suites, he was transitioned into bridge housing for four months. Upon completion of his bridge housing stay, Tommy was approved and transitioned into permanent housing where he currently resides. He called his case manager to express how grateful he was for all the assistance he has received, and because of this, his health is much more sustainable than ever before. And we also have a very happy birthday to Chief Willie, and there he is, so happy birthday to our Chief Willie. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Where are you, Chief Willie? You're out there and above, but I see we do have fire and rescue here, so please extend that birthday. Wow. A Leo Leo, maybe? Or no?
No, he's a Cancer.
Cancer, okay. All right, well, beautiful picture, and there he is, in his white shirt. So happy birthday to you, Chief. And Councilman Knutson, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I just have two updates today. I'd like to share with everyone, as we begin this new month. The first is that I want to share that my team and I are partnering up with Get Outdoors Nevada for a small park cleanup at Bill Breyer for the early morning of July 25. We'll have donuts and coffee, and bring a friend, bring your kids, and anyone interested in doing some community service for an hour and a half, and don't forget your masks. And I want to thank Get Outdoors Nevada for always getting Nevadans up and going, and keeping them healthy, and through, and through light outdoor activity and community service. And on the next slide, this is a return-to-your-doctor reminder. The second update I want to share is that earlier this week, I had the opportunity of publishing an editorial piece in the Las Vegas Sun to remind everyone to reschedule or update necessary appointments with your doctor, as our medical professionals in Southern Nevada are ready to see you. In the piece, we wrote about the importance of Nevadans going back to see their doctor, especially during this global pandemic. This includes doctors, dentists, and mental health professionals. We want to continue to monitor our health, schedule necessary appointments, and keep our kids healthy. You can continue to see our ad campaign via radio, website ads, and more. Thank you to Festival Warren and to the city's Office of Communications, specifically David Riggleman's team, really grateful for everything they've done, for the big help, and on this project, we will benefit many residents across our great city. And finally, my team is here to help. In the recent weeks, we've received thousands of emails from constituents. We do our best to connect everyone to the resources they need, from fireworks to suggestions on how we can be better. We are always here to listen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First and foremost, I just want to extend my sincere condolences to Vanessa Guillen's family, and also to Private Gregory Morales's family, who are going through very difficult times. Vanessa went missing since April 22nd, and I just hope that as a mom, when your children enlist, they are at the center and at the forefront of the work, and that we do everything possible to locate them when they go missing and they don't come back to work. And so I just hope that we remember Vanessa Guillen and Gregory Morales, and that they are extended all the honors for their services. And it's been a difficult past few weeks for them, but I hope that we can do better moving forward. So here into the Ward Three business, we need your help again. I'm just making sure that we're taking your community input to name this park Harris and Marion. It will have an equestrian theme, and we just want as many name suggestions as possible for us to consider in naming this amazing amenity that is coming your way. So please send us those recommendations online, or you can also always call us at 702-229-4623. We're looking to complete this park by the fall of 2020, and we're taking recommendations for names through the end of this month, July 31st. I want to extend an invite to the community, the Ward Three community that lives around Baker Park. I know it's been difficult to go without the pool for the last two years, and so this week, we're offering a free swim to all the residents. So the free swim is extended July 6 through the 11th, from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and on Saturday, it's noon to 5:00. Know that we are taking precautions. We limit entry to only fifty people at a time, so that all the swimmers can socially distance, and you need to make sure that you come in wearing a face covering. Of course, we understand if there are medical conditions, but we do want to continue to adhere to all the safety protocols to keep everyone safe. If you have any questions about this free swim, give a call to 702-229-play, and the Baker Park Pool is located off of 1100 East St. Louis, in our freshly renovated Baker Again, just trying to get the word out, right now, we're not able to have community gatherings or meetings like we usually would do, to take all of the input from the community, but we do want to hear from you. We do want to know what's on your mind about the Maryland Parkway Corridor. It's a transit-oriented development plan that is in the works. Right now is the time to give us that input that we want to hear. What does our community need? What does our community see down the road? And what amenities, or what businesses, would be helpful to bring to different areas along this transit-oriented development plan? So you can always visit at Olivia Diaz LV on Facebook to find where you can submit your survey. I'm sure RTC also has it, and the city has been very proactive in also posting it via Twitter and other social media, so I encourage you to hop online and give us your input, because by the time we have the project already planned out, and we're already digging in the streets or building out, that's a little too late. We can't redirect the course, so this is a time to change that course. And I just want to reiterate that we launched last week, Está en tus manos, which means "It's in Your Hands." And this is a campaign, a public awareness campaign for our communities, to ensure that it is in our hands, to make sure that we're adhering and following the protocols to maintain ourselves healthy and well. We can wash our hands frequently. We need to be tested if, if we know someone around us, whether family, or colleagues, or coworkers, have COVID, have tested positive for COVID-19, so it's super imperative that we get tested as soon as we find out, that we wear our face masks in public, so that we are protecting others, and in turn, protecting ourselves. And we've been able to stand up some giveaways for face masks in the community, and, but it is in our hands, to do everything possible to fight this pandemic and slow the spread, because we have seen our numbers increasing over these past few weeks, and we need to make sure that we can flatten the curve. Everybody wants to get back to normal. Everyone wants our kids going back to school, but we all need to do our part to see that come to fruition and be a reality. As always, we're here at your service. Please reach out to us at wardthree@lasvegassnovada.gov, or follow us on social media at Olivia Diaz LV, whether it be Facebook, Twitter, or Instagram. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I approach him?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, I noticed one of our comments came from somebody whose name sounded like he might be Greek, so part of your family, I know. I mean, everybody's your family, but certainly he is. And just to thank everybody, thank our council. This is indeed an early meeting, usually our first of the month is. I want to assure those who have asked us to join, I've known Pat Cunningham and been on our, our West Side, Historic West Side Radio, for as long as it's been in existence. Pat and I go back over fifty-one years, and unfortunately for this gentleman to my left and your right, he's same age as my children, we've known him all those wonderful years, and I think he's got a birthday coming next week. So you're stepping out ahead of my oldest son. Is that fact?
That is true, yeah. I think I'm about that.
Yeah, I bet you do. But anyway, certainly Chief Willie and Councilman Creer, we wish you the happiest of birthdays. It has been a challenging time for us all, and, you know, the only thing I would wish is, of course, people stay safe and healthy, but I always wish people would ask questions rather than attacking, because you have no idea how hard this council, and previous members of council, have worked, and continue to work, to make our family of the city of Las Vegas a huge one-family, and I boast about it every time I'm back at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and mayors from around the country come up to me, because they know how incredible it is, how diverse a community. And if you look at the good side of things, you will hear that, too. Everybody knows our city, and we are as diverse as any community, any city of twelve million or less, and I'm specifically speaking to New York City, where I grew up, but it's a wonderful time, and it only happens because each of us, each of us, all of us, make the commitment, one day at a time, to do our part. It is not our right to demand of others, or make them do anything. We take care of ourselves, we make our choices, and hate goes nowhere, nowhere at all. And so I have loved this community since 1964, have seen it change and grow, and get better. And believe me, this council, in every ward, is a place of action, and listening, and doing it, and we just need those who hate to get on board with us, and work, and be accountable for what they have done. And so know we are one community, and certainly this council is representative of its diversity, not inclusively, because you can see who we are, but there are other parts of our community, whether they're from India, Pakistan, Japan, Korea, Vietnam, South America, Central America, Canada. There are just so many of us that really embrace everybody that comes to Las Vegas to make it a home and make it a better place, so don't go accusing unless you've asked the question first. And so for everybody that's out there, we're hearing today from the governor, and of course, as we're sitting here, unless somebody's received a text, we don't know what is coming forward, but we know we are a strong and resilient group. The governor has asked us, distance, social distance, separation, and to wear our masks. And I think any parent that's ever had a child, or has been part of a family growing up, you know when you're sick, you don't go coughing on other people, you cover your mouth, and however you do that, and keep your germs stay away from people. So if you feel that you're ill, please stay home. But other than that, by, by the distance separations, certainly coughs go a heck of a lot further than six feet. They go twenty and thirty feet, and just know for yourselves that stay away from those who are coughing, and yourself, take care of yourself, your responsibility, everything that we do, we do together. And as always, we thank our, all of our first responders, our fire and rescue, our law enforcement, our IT, all our divisions of this city that work so hard to make it a wonderful place to live, to work, and to enjoy each other. So I want to thank all of our department chairs, and our chiefs, and everybody that works so hard. We are here because we elect to be here, and choose to do our best to make this a warm and giving community, every single one of us. And so I just hope you continue on, and we do respond when we hear directly from you. So the fact that you would say we don't, you possibly haven't reached the right source yet, but keep trying, because we do. And for those of you out there in small businesses, I hope you heard our city manager about more funds becoming available, and for those of you who keep calling all the time about your inability to get your unemployment, we're hearing you, we are continuing to work to help, and we do hope that this, this shutdown will soon be lifted. If a hundred percent of us in the state of Nevada are tested for COVID, you're going to find an increase in the number of positives, but we don't have prevention yet, and we don't have real treatment yet, and we don't have a vaccine yet. We're 3.2 million, and 3.2 million could be positive today or tomorrow. That doesn't mean you're going to remain without needing more testing in another month or so. So just know, it's an indication for you to know, and listening to Councilman Knutson about seeing your physician, if you are having symptoms, please make sure, and for all your daily good health upkeep, whether it's your teeth, your eyes, your hearing, every part of you, go see your physicians, or go to the healthcare services that are available, and wish you all a safe and good weekend, and know it's up to each one of us to do our part, and don't accuse people of things about you know nothing about. Thank you. We are adjourned.